This is the October 13th meeting of the Berlin Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being recorded. Your image or and voice may be recorded. As soon as Pat gets on, I think I'll introduce all of us. Not that anybody is listening.
No, we have no one in attendance. It's just the board. There's Pat.
Or at least the top of Pat's head.
Joey does that.
Well, I move to accept the meeting minutes and close the meeting.
I'm Lynn Ryan. And Susannah, would you raise your hand? And Keith, would you raise your hand? Jim, would you raise your hand? Jenny, would you raise your hand? And where did Pat go?
And we lost Pat. She decided she didn't want to attend.
Might have been my head comment. I'm sorry.
Yeah, you have that effect on people, huh, Keith?
Except for you. You seem to be unbudgable.
Here she comes again.
We had a few technical difficulties getting in. I'm in Berlin. I had planned on being down the Cape, but I'm not. And I'm over at my daughter's because my broadband isn't broad.
That would make it narrow band.
That's here, but not on camera. So we're just without Jenny.
I love the sound effects, Pat.
I don't go on now. I'm leaving.
We can hear you.
Just can't see you, but that's fine. We can hear you.
That's fine. I'll leave it like that.
Okay.
And the final member is Pat Jackson. I'll call the meeting to order. I believe there was going to be a motion to accept the minutes. Who made the motion? Was it you, Keith?
Yes, it was.
Did someone second it? These are the minutes of
September 8.
Okay. Any discussion, any questions? If not, I'll call for a roll call vote. I'm an eye. Susannah?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Dennis?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Okay. I had hoped for tonight to have a new application form, but I haven't finished it yet. I did talk to the town clerk. I think I mentioned that before. She had a couple of requests. What I'll do is finish it up. Again, it's just technical difficulties with the word. And have you put it out for you to look at? Please respond to Leanne if you have any problems with it. And then I'll give it to Susannah because you were going to drop it into a PDF, right?
Yes.
Okay. We don't have any hearings or anything else tonight. Jenny, did you clear that one outstanding?
I've been working, trying to work with Monachuset and Lemmon stuff at Kimberly. And I asked her to send a letter requesting the return of the money. And I haven't seen or heard anything from them in two weeks.
Does she know what the money was given for?
She knew of it. But she was gonna go to her boss and see if they could figure out what to do with it.
Yeah. We have, what is it, $5,000, Jenny?
Correct.
That's in an escrow account.
Yes.
It looks to Jenny and I, although he's been the one that's been doing the research, that it comes from Northbrook Village Two or whatever the elderly housing units is called. I don't, we had it at all, okay? Because we only take one account from the petitioner. And we use it for everything, whether it's, you know, Board of Health or anything else to do peer reviews. So I think it belongs to them. But Jenny was trying to find out if in fact it belonged, you know, if they'd raised their hand and say, yeah, we put it in there. This is the housing, okay? But so far, no go.
Yeah, I started with the regular Northbrook. And they said that they had given the money to Northbrook Two, the $5,000. And so then I went to Northbrook Village Two. And they know about it. They want it back. They just don't want to write the letter.
I'll take it then.
In all fairness, it's really not your problem. It's good you're researching it and you're helping to turn it out. But I don't think it's our money.
No, it's their money.
So we can't authorize the release of it anyway.
Well, we can after they request to have it released.
The ZBA didn't get it, so I don't know how we could vote to release it.
Well, if I get some letter, maybe June can release it.
Right. Or the selectmen. That would be the other thing is for them to say that, you know, it doesn't really belong to anybody. But I don't know that we ever received any money for Northbrook Village One or Two. For, it sounds like it's for septic or something, septic or well or and we usually have one account we get from the petitioner. And so far, I don't think it's ours. And I don't think we can vote to release it. But Jenny's been working very hard on it. And thank you, Jenny, for all your help.
I think it stemmed from them the land and putting all the wells way out and back and bringing it forward. That's where this thing got originated from.
Either that or it's the Board of Health. You know, where it was in LIT, a local initiative petition, it may be the Board of Health asked for that.
Then I gotta go chase down Sunny and the Boundless Adventure.
Oh, is there money there?
Yes.
How do we have money from Sunny? Where is that from?
Well, I believe it's from Sunny. Property is where Boundless Adventures is. And whether it went through him, Boundless Adventure went through Sunny to get the permit to build the thing. It's
Well, I think if it's Boundless Adventures, okay, if that's the name that it's in.
Right.
I think it's ours. You know, we would be the ones that helped the hearing and gave the permit for that.
Right.
But if it's something that predated that when they were trying to do the
Well.
whatever, I don't know. Maybe the planning board.
Wouldn't that be nice to give it to them?
On a platter? Okay, well, thanks, Jenny. Little did you know, huh, that this was gonna be such an issue.
Yes, carry on.
We basically don't have anything else other than to talk about upcoming events. Is that correct, Leanne?
That is correct.
Again, our next meeting will be
November 10.
November 10, right. And it'll be a Zoom meeting. Right now, we have one hearing scheduled for seven o'clock. And that's for 19 Codestory. And that's an appeal from the building inspector. Everybody's looked at that?
Yes.
Okay. It's possible that that may be possibly withdrawn. I understand there's some negotiations going on at a different level of our local government and the folks involved. So maybe they'll be able to work it out among themselves. There is one other one hanging out there that may come in for next month. They have till next Wednesday, right, Leanne?
No, it's this Wednesday. And if you're talking about 275 Central Street, they did file their application yesterday.
Okay, I haven't seen it yet.
I emailed it to you this morning.
Is that the little greenhouse right before the on-ramp?
The old Bob Taylor house.
That doesn't help me.
On the corner of, yes, you're right, of Taylor Road, right near 495, and then the gas stations on the other side.
Yeah, it used to have the cute little antique gas pump out front.
Yes.
Yeah.
Taylor Island.
Exactly. Yeah, looking to put in an office.
They've, they've applied for a building permit for doing siding. And then they just applied for one to do renovate the kitchen and bath. But also they're looking to do is some renovations and then use the space as office space.
Don't they need, they need a new septic system, I think.
I do not.
The issue is more, that's a limited business district, zoning district. It's about 1.6 acres. But I think there's, you know, some things we need to look at. When and if we approve it, it sounds like he's just gonna use it for an office, a maximum of three people working there, whatever. But we can't approve a building unless it meets what would be needed in the future for an office, if you know what I mean. So it would be a good idea to take a look at site plan approval carefully as far as parking, access, egress, green area. I did mention to Tim Wheeler again, and we had a phone call about a couple of things, that it is a non-conforming lot. Because limited business, I think, has to be what is it in the book? Somebody take a peek. I think that, in other words, the lot size. What's the minimum lot size?
Give me a minute.
And then the frontage is, has to be 50 feet. I don't, you know, we have to so those are the kinds of things you could take a look at before we have the hearing, which I'm assuming we'll schedule that for like 7:30 next month, Leanne, okay?
Okay.
If we run over, we run over. But it may well be that we don't have that other hearing. Well, the possibility is there, so I don't want to put it out to eight o'clock.
Right. Yep, so I'll wait for a public hearing notice from you and get that off to them.
Yeah, so minimum lot size on a limited business is 140,000 square feet with 300 feet of frontage. 300 feet?
He's gonna be close, tight to that, because they own up Taylor Road.
Well, they, there's a portion there that belongs to the gas station, though, Jenny. You know where the gas station is, right across there. There's a strip of land that belongs to the gas station.
Obama always told me it was his, so.
Well, you, when you see the plans.
Okay.
Along with that, too, did we, Leanne?
I'm sorry?
That, there's plans included in that?
Yes, he did supply something that is on eight and a half by 11 paper, so that I could scan it and send it electronically. But he also did the full-size plans. I'm waiting for the hard copies of that. So probably Monday, when I'm in the office, I should have everything and for anybody who wants to pick it up.
Okay, so I think 140 one of my concerns was the size of the lot. Because 140,000 square feet I don't think is on that lot. That lot is 1.6 acres. So what's an acre, about 100?
Acre is 42,000 feet.
Yeah. So an acre and a half. But I said to Tim, you know, there's some issues about that particular lot. I mean, it's the size of it and everything. And he said, well, if the lot was in existence when they re zoned it. So, you know, it may need to be or it may be acceptable. So there's a lot to talk about, about that one. You know, frontage, access, egress. I don't think there's 50 feet of frontage there. I think, oh, the dimensions, too. You have to have 50 feet of front yard.
Yeah.
Oh, is, would that qualify as a corner lot, though? That might change things.
Well, no. I mean, you have to look at it. It's not contiguous. They have, that lot, as I remember, has frontage on 62. But it also has frontage on Taylor Road. But the two don't come together. The corner lot is technically the piece that belongs to the gas station. But when you see the plan, perhaps it'll become clearer to you.
All right, and we're gonna get the plan by PDF, right?
Yeah, I can send it out. Actually, to, no, I don't have it scanned in yet. I, Monday, I'll send it out Monday. Of course, the PDF is gonna be a very small diagram. But I'll, and I should have the full-size drawings for pickup in the office by Monday as well.
Okay. Yeah, that would be tricky because if well, limited business, two to three story, you're limited to 3,500 square foot, well, that's a lot. Plus 10% of this of the lot size minus 80,000.
Well, we really shouldn't get too far into it, but I'm suggesting you take a look at the plan and take a look at the dimensional issues with the lot. And
Was it commercial before this or was it residential?
Oh, I mean, that house has been there forever. In fact, it may have been industrial at one point. But it's now limited business.
But wouldn't that be grandfathered anyways, or no?
This is what Tim is saying. The lot is grandfathered, right. Okay. But is it grandfathered as a residence? So anyway, we'll have a lot to talk about. I think my discussion with Tim, the feeling sort of is, well, we came in and we rezoned them, and now they're gonna use it as limited business. But given the other parameters that we have to meet or stay within the limited business, it's gonna be interesting. And we, one thing we have to remember is, yes, what he's gonna do is, I guess, like I don't know if he's in property management or if he's an insurance guy or something along those lines. And he said at some point, Leanne, he wouldn't have more than three customers, right?
He said he would not have customers. He would have a maximum of three workers, including himself, over time. He would not have, the business does not include customers coming in and out. It's an invest, turning point investments, so I don't know, it doesn't specify what they do, but no customers, maximum three people, and that includes him.
The issue for us is if and when he were to sell that and someone else were to come in and it was, you know, they had a special permit for a business office space. I mean, we'll talk about it when the time comes. Pat, are you and Jenny inclined to do our spreadsheet?
We looked at it. Yeah, we were talking about doing that.
Do you want me to do a write-up for it so it can be on the
Probably not.
Oh, really?
You're thinking the next Board of Selects meeting or something?
Oh, no, no, no. I'm thinking that I can request, like I did before, for it to be part of the work-off.
Oh, okay. Let me talk to Jenny, and then we'll get back to you.
One of the other things I'd like to know is how much time you think you need.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's the rough beginning that we saw on the spreadsheet, right?
Yes, that's something that you've got that, Leanne, right?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
You'd probably have to go back at least 10 years and check to see what ones were restricted. And add any columns and clean it up a bit. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And make sure that we could do a search on it, et cetera.
Okey doke.
But that should help you too, Leanne, to have that spreadsheet, right? I mean, it would be nice if people all shared, you know? Because it goes way, way back. Well, I consider it way, way back. It's before I lived here.
Yeah, wait, I saw some, I don't know if it was there or it was actually on the website, though, it was the literally at least 20 years, right?
Supposedly, it goes back to the 1960s.
Okay. Oh, all right. Okay.
And again, we'd add those into whatever you do. But if you guys have some idea, is it gonna take 80 hours, 100 hours, 200 hours, whatever you think? So I can put in a form. Do the tax write-up.
Okey doke. Thank you. We'll get back to you, okay?
Excellent. Anybody else have anything? Anything else going on in town?
No, there's that workforce housing proposal. It's a bylaw that the planning board is talking about. And that's one of the reasons why I think it's important to go to the planning board meeting to find out more about what it is. And hopefully, they would ask us what our issues are when things come before the board as special permits.
What, what basically does it do?
I'm not sure how much I understand because I'm only hearing about it third-hand. But from what I understand, they want to be able to put multiple small houses on a single lot. A two-acre lot.
Really?
My cat really wants to be part of this meeting.
Is that supposed to be on a permanent basis or is that a temporary thing?
I, I don't know enough about it. I know, the only reason I know about it is because they were floating the idea for the Tolman property of putting two small houses on a 1.8 acre lot using this workforce housing that was based on some bylaw that Concord had written to bring not affordable housing under the affordable housing law, but just not as expensive housing for people that wouldn't otherwise be able to afford to live here. Not low income, but not average income either. And I wish I could give you more details, but I really don't know anything else beyond that.
Do you know if it's on their next agenda?
I do not.
Okay.
They just had a meeting, excuse me, they just had a meeting last night, so they haven't posted their next agenda. Their next meeting would be the 26th. Their agenda typically gets posted the Thursday before.
But I would also like to talk to them about revisiting some of the changes to the bylaws that we had proposed way back in the spring.
Right. I think we should. I still have them in my bag here. I have the list you had. I think we should come up with a list and tell them what our issues are. My one priority is pre-existing non-conform. My concern with that is we can actually change zoning. And I, they don't, I don't think they know that. And I don't think they understood it. And one of the examples I have is technically, because, oh, let's say, the junkyard up on Coben, well, it's not a junkyard, what is it? Recycling? Is pre-existing non-conforming because it's in residential agricultural. Well, the bylaw, the way it is, as far as I read it, and I think they agree, if they wanted to come in and do a car dealership, let's say, there, they would just apply to us and have us do a change in use. We can't do it anywhere else. We're not authorized. We can't allow someone in residential agricultural to do something that would be not allowed in the district, but would be a commercial use. We can't do that. It's only with the pre-existing non-conforming. And the other question I had for them on that is, and Tim remembers, too, there used to be a percentage increase in a pre-existing non-conforming. If you have a house and it's on half an acre and you want to enlarge it because it's pre-existing non-conforming, we can give you permission to enlarge it as much as you want to. Which makes no sense to me. The other person who buys a regular lot, you know, has limitations. So anyway, if anybody has and even if you have them right now, thoughts about other pieces of the bylaw? I still think they need to clarify vehicular weight there, but I think we should back off of that for the time being. We've at least got something in there and let's fry some other fish.
Yeah, because with the home-based contracting business, it still says must be a resident. It doesn't say must be an owner. And
Well, I don't, have the bylaws been updated? I don't think so, right?
I'm using one from 2018, so.
It's the latest.
It's the latest one, but what is the last date in the front of the book? As the town meeting?
Mine is still 2018.
Yeah, September 7. 2018 is the
Right. So you'd need to go, I don't know if they've even updated online, because when did they change? We voted that when, in May?
Yes.
Well, they have to wait for the attorney general to approve it before they can put it in the book.
If we go, if we go by the dates on the cover, it should have happened around August. And posted and published sometime in September, but that, obviously, that hasn't happened yet.
Right.
Well, I think everything's kind of messed up with that, too, though. I mean, previously, we had town meetings earlier in the year with the whole COVID thing, the Attorney General's office is backed up and, you know. So I don't know that the prior timeline still holds up at this point.
Well, I think 2018 also doesn't include the cannabis law. But the cannabis one is on the one that's online. But the cannabis one is on the one that's online. So I think that the 2018 is in fact 2018.
Okay, so how does that affect what we're talking about?
Well, when you talk, we've, the town meeting voted to approve the change in the vehicular weight, and they said everywhere it says that, that it's supposed to, you know, say as red, as registered with the Registry of Motor Vehicles, but that wouldn't be in there yet.
Okay, yes.
Because it came after.
Right, so do we wait until we get the new one issued? Or until we at least hear from the Attorney General's office?
I have no, no reason to believe that the Attorney General won't approve it. And um, I think that um they want it in there as much as we do at this point, to be honest. So what I'm looking for is stuff that they would wanna put on articles for the May Town Meeting. May 22. Um, and I, I think that we had other things that we wanted them to do, I don't even think in the one you have, you know how we did that revision for the um common driveway? In other words, if you're gonna go make a change or whatever, the verbiage we gave them, they pretty well took verbatim. And they approved it, and town meeting approved it, okay? But it's not in the book yet. We did vote that at town meeting, right, guys?
I didn't go this year, I don't know.
I don't recall.
I don't even remember what day it is today, so no.
Okay, but anyway, I hope that answers your question, Susanna. The book you're using, the book I'm using is not up to date.
Right, I, I thought there was, there was some stipulation that you cannot, or maybe this is just the building code, I don't know, but you have to use the paper copy, you can't use the online copy legally.
Oh gee, I never heard that.
I, I, I might be applying something from the building code to the bylaws, I don't know, it might just be the building code.
It's a new one, if it is, if that's fact, then it's new to me.
All right.
Okay, unless someone wants to chat for a couple of minutes, I think our business is pretty well done. Uh, anyone not gonna be able to be in attendance next month? Okay.
If, if I don't attend, it's because I am getting the shingles vaccine that day.
You're not old enough for the shingles vaccine.
Uh, thankfully I am, so.
Okay, anybody else have anything? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved?
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion in a second, I'm an I, Susanna?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Keith?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Okay, folks, we are adjourned.